Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled council meeting of Wednesday, September 18th. Let the record show all councils are present with the exception of Councilor Hildebrand. We have one in adds and deletes, we have bids and quotes, number five A. Could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Move on to approval of minutes. Number one, approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council Meeting of September 4th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Two, move to approval of the minutes of Hibbing City Council Workshop of September 4th, 2024. Wishes of the council. Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Move on to consent agenda. Number one, approve the accounts payable dated September 12th, 2024, checks number 178234 through 178326 in the amount of $912,174.25. Two, approve the city payroll ending September 6th, 2024 in the amount of $603,701.90. Three, authorize the mayor's thank you letter to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon members, veterans, and volunteers for their time and effort cleaning veterans' headstones at the Maple Hill Cemetery. Four, approve the renewal of the 2025 Blue Cross Blue Shield Group Medicare Plans for post-65 retirees. Approve the renewal of the twenty, or five, declare seven financial, finance department desks as surplus and authorize disposal. Six, authorize the hire of Jack Beatty for the full-time auto truck driver skilled labor position effective September 19th, 2024. Authorize the hire seven, authorize the hire of Gary Spore for full-time automated truck driver position effective September 19th, 2024. Eight, approve the community service officer, CSO job description effective September 19th, 2024. Nine, authorize the hire of Jeremiah Enen for the part-time CSO pending pre-employment contingencies. Ten, authorize the hire of Matthew Hadfield for the full-time patrol officer position pending pre-employment contingencies. Eleven, authorize the posting of an automated truck driver skilled labor position in a sanitation department. Twelve, authorize the posting of a skilled labor position in Streets and Ellie's Department. Thirteen, authorize the posting of two library aides. Fourteen, authorize Hibbing City Council to attend a marketing dinner on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, at the catering group by Boomtown. Fifteen, set the special workshop meeting for Monday, September 23rd, 2024 at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Discussion, mind view, and roundtable. Sixteen, set the next regular Hibbing City Council Meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 at 5:00 PM in the city council chambers. Seventeen, set the next regular Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, following the regular city council meeting in the city council chambers. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written and published.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. We have nothing for the public forum tonight. We'll move on to department and committee reports, starting first with city engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council, we received a request from the Hibbing PD to install a four-way stop at the intersection of 19th Avenue East and 37th Street. Currently, there's stop signs on 37th but not on 19th. Apparently, there've been some high-speed accidents there over a period of time. Talking with the police chief, we would like to install those signs. That'll be the only stop signs on 19th Avenue East between Highway 37 and 25th Street. So, we would think this would help hold grace greatly with those accidents. So, I'm asking for council approval.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say about a four-way stop on 37th and 19th, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Jesse, I had one point of discussion. I assume anytime new stop signs going up, we'll have some other markers to let them know that something new is there, so that they're used to that four-way stop.
Yeah, Mayor Council, we'll do as all, excuse me, we'll install the signs, we'll probably flag the stop signs, and then we'll put stop ahead signs, a distance before that.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. At this time, we move on to City Service Director, Mr. Rolla. Good evening, Nick.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Council. First one I have for you tonight would be approved resolution 24-09-10. This would be authorizing City of Hibbing to make application to and accept funds from the IRRB Commercial Redevelopment Grant Request Program. If awarded, this grant would be used for the raising of the North Wooden Grandstand at the Hibbing Raceway. As you know, it's in dire need of either major renovation repairs or it needs to kind of come down. We did have a chance to meet last week with the race president of the raceway, and you know, went through a few options and stuff, and we're at the point right now where we're taking it down is probably the best option moving forward. It is not on their top priority list as a club for renovations out there. They have a few other things before the North Grandstand. And we've had contractors take a look at it, and we don't have anybody that would commit to doing major repairs on that grandstand. So, looking at that, our best option at this point is to take it down, take that hazard away. It is a public safety risk as it is, and we've gone two years without using it. And we've, or they've adapted, and it hasn't been really an issue out there from the sounds of it. So, just looking for your approval to go after grant money for that demo. And later on, if approved, would be awarding a bid on that demo, so.
Very good, so Mr. Rolla's looking for resolution, authorize the city to make an application to accept funds to tear down North Beachers at the racetrack. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, P, Nick.
B is offer resolution 24-09-11, accepting donation from the Owens Foundation for the use at upcoming special events. We were awarded from the Ben Owens Foundation $1,130, and we'd like to accept that donation. And it would go towards some special event equipment that we're looking for. There's large inflatable projector screen. This would pay for the timing equipment for the upcoming Halloween 5K. And then also just new games and supplies for the New Year's 18 bash that we had at the Memorial Building over New Year's. So, just looking to accept that, and again, another very nice gesture by the Owens Foundation, and thank them again for all their contributions to the community.
Very good. Looking for resolution, accepting donations from the Owens Foundation, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, C, Nick.
Item C is looking for your approval on the plans and to move forward with Phase 1 of Cary Lake Campground Construction, and request approval to go out for quotes on these first three items. We're looking to separate out the first three things into quotes, going out for quotes. And the first one would be the septic system, the well, and then general site prep and clearing and grubbing of the area out there for the campground. The plans and specs and everything were included in your packet. If there are any questions regarding that, I have members from our engineering here tonight to help answer any questions. But yeah, we're looking to get it out as soon as possible. You know, most likely a 10-day period to get quotes. We're under the bidding threshold at this point, so looking to go out and just get quotes for those three items and get moving as quick as possible this fall. We do have some grant money that we'd like to start using up here before the end of the year, and those matching funds associated with that. So, that would be our plan. But yeah, in your packet were the plans for, I believe it was roughly 30-site campground. I believe there's 14 pulled, or back in, 12 pulled through, a 3K per group site, and then also a host site, host campground site, and then not to mention five to six other tent camping sites. So, just looking to get started on that process.
All right, very good, exciting to hear that moving forward. Looking for support?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any other discussion? So, Nick, if this gets through, you're looking at going for bids right away, and hopefully this fall, you'll have those three by freeze-up.
Correct.
You could be sitting in pretty good shape.
Yep, correct, yeah, going out tomorrow and starting that process, getting those bids, get as far as we can until the weather allows us, and then come back in the spring if needed. We just actually had a meeting prior to this on the ski trails and how we can keep that access open along with some clearing and grubbing here this fall, so.
Very good. We have a motion in second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, P, Nick.
Next up, as we talked about at the last council work session, just with the heavy use of the pickleball courts, there's getting to be some questions about hosting tournaments in different private rentals there. So, I just put together a rental agreement for that, and just looking for your approval to implement that and go forward, so.
Very good, hearing what Mr. Rolla had to say regarding pickleball reservations, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swyberger, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, E, Nick.
Looking for your approval to sign a contract with SAM Concessions to operate the concessions at the Memorial Building. We did go out for that RFP on concession stand operator at the Memorial Building. We did receive two responses to that, and our recommendation is to move forward with SAM concessions. We did, this would be a one-year contract with a one-year option for a second possibly. We did work with Attorney Borland on adding some new provisions in the agreement, you know, to kind of safeguard the city and put in some penalties and different things like that in there, and also a performance bond to hopefully make it as smooth as possible for the city in future as we move forward through the contract. So, looking for your approval to move forward with an agreement.
Very good, I'm looking for support or approval of contract agreement with SAM Concessions, wishes of the council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved, approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to city attorney, Mr. Borland.
Mayor members of the council, I believe in your packet, you should find a proposed easement document. I mentioned this at our last working session. This is for parcels of property at 529 Highland Drive and 535 Highland Drive. Masabi Drive actually stopped short of their respective properties. So, although it's city property, they're landlocked, they're trying to go through a sale right now, so they're getting a kickback saying that they don't have access to their property. So, in order to alleviate that, this is an easement that essentially just extends Masabi Drive to the 535 landowner's property. It's not forever. The city engineer has indicated that at some point in time, Hibbing Highlands goes through, Masabi Drive will be extended in the way the easement reads. It would terminate upon the public way being completed, though it's in there for your consideration this evening.
Very good, hearing what Mr. Borland had to say regarding resolution for easing, easement, access to property, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, P, Mr. Borland.
Mayor members of the council, I think at our last working session as well, we discussed the feeding the animals ordinance that had been amended earlier this year. It was discussed again, so it's back in the same form as the last time you sought for your consideration this evening. This limits that feeding to only applying to the urban area, Urban Service District within the city of Hibbing. It's on for your consideration this evening.
Hearing what Mr. Borland had to say regarding adopting a city code chapter for eating wild animals, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
I'll support it.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Mayor.
At this time, building official, Mr. Pat Green. Evening, Pat.
Evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you is a purchase agreement, I think, for the vacant Hong Kong building at 1928 Fourth Avenue East. That building has been dilapidated and unsound. We've had to board it up, the doors, the windows, quite a few times, Public Works has in the last three years. In May, we had a resolution to go to court for condemnation. Been dealing with, I've talked to the owner, et cetera. If we go to court and get a condemnation order, we end up raising the building, paying for it, and assessing the property. We have no control. Would we collect that assessment? Not likely. It would end up going back to the county. So, by purchasing it, we would own the property, we would have site control, we could develop it. We have a parking lot right next to that property, which could be extended. The new Elks is also right next to that building. They may have interest in it, and I would recommend the actual purchase of that property.
Very good, hearing what Mr. Green had to say regarding the purchasing Baqian.
Make a motion to approve.
Nope.
No.
Hong Kong restaurant.
I'm sorry.
Baqian's still good.
Thinking to the right food. Purchasing the Hong Kong, and we have a motion first by Councilor Bayless, and support by, support by Councilor Whitney. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
No, I'm hungry, Pat. All right, we move on to bids and quotes, and to start with, we move first with city deputy administrator, city clerk, Ms. Sepala.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I bring before you the purchase of 16 pole pad packages. They have flip stands and receipt printers. They're from No Ink in the amount of $25,840, which includes shipping. In the past, we have had books that you flip through. It can take up to six minutes for each voter who comes there if they don't find their name quickly, and they have to sign on the book. And then there are names right above and below. It just made sense to really make this more private for the voters. The process now takes about 20 seconds. It's all electronic. If they don't vote at that specific precinct, we can look right on the pole pad and tell them exactly where they vote with their address in there. It's a time saver, efficient, and accuracy for all. And I would, I'm just entertaining the motion for purchasing those 16 pole pad packages for $25,840.
Very good, hearing what Ms. Sepala had to say regarding pole pad packages, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, support? Support by Councilor Swyberger, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Candy.
Thank you.
Move on to city engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor Council, attached is a quote from Carquest for a new Robin Air AC service unit with refrigerant. This piece of equipment is used to recharge AC units. With the newer vehicles, the equipment we have will not do that anymore. It's a different refrigerant. This is something that we had in the 2025 budget. We found funds in the sanitation budget to pay for this and buy it now. So, I'm asking for council approval. The amount is $6,979.98.
Okay, hearing what city engineer, Mr. Story, had to say, wishes of the council. Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Finance Director, Treasurer, Ms. Muller.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item I have before you is to approve the purchase of seven new desks for the finance department with accessories in an amount not to exceed $52,350.50. Our desks have been repurposed and reused for many years. Many are broken and taped together. A lot of the drawers don't stay closed. In addition, the replacement of the desks will give finance staff the option to stand so they don't sit for eight straight hours every day. This purchase falls under the NASCO Cooperative Purchasing Contract. I have $50,000 budgeted in my capital budget for software. I would like to reallocate this budget to be used towards the desks. Any overage would come from our operating in the general fund. I'm asking if council will approve the purchase of the desks.
Very good, hearing what Ms. Muller had to say, wishes of the council.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Bayless. Support by Councilor Swyberger, any discussion? I am happy that you're getting the adjustable. That's so important nowadays, so.
Mayor. Yes. Just real quick, that replaces everything in that room, correct?
Pretty much everything. I mean, we like bookcases and some other things that we're just keeping. But otherwise, everybody's desk will be replaced with a sit-to-stand. And then some of like the cabinetry and things like that that were like attached to the old desks now would be replaced with some new pieces. And we also had, I had also reached out to all the department heads to see if we can reuse any of the old pieces. It sounds like we might repurpose my desk in the building and housing departments, so Pat can look at plans and lay them out, so we can probably utilize some of it. But the rest of it will probably, it's so old and outdated, we'll probably just get rid of it.
Wonderful, thank you.
Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Move on to city service director, Mr. Rolla.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A here, looking for your approval, the quote to, excuse me, the quote from 218 Tree Service LLC to help out with some boulevard tree removal in the amount of $25,000. This would be paid for our relief grant that we had with the state DNR. We have some funds left over to help with some of those Emerald Ashport trees and things like that. So, we would use that money to pay for this to help out with some of those boulevard trees. Looking for your approval to 218 Tree Service.
Very good, hearing what Mr. Rolla had to say about quote from the tree service for boulevard trees, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, the trees that are being removed, are they diseased and are they going to be replaced?
They've been, the trees that are coming down have been flagged for removal through the study and the assessment, and we're identifying new species and what size of trees can go back in there, because the current trees that are in there are just busting up all the sidewalks and everything as well. So, yeah, we're working on those parameters on what can go back in there and putting something in its place.
And then didn't we have discussion that you were going to work with Jesse about the broken sidewalks and that type of thing? Okay, but thank you, appreciate it.
Very good, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, P, Nick.
Item B would be the quote, looking for approval on the demolition and disposing of the wood frame grandstand, North Grandstand at the raceway. The low bid on that was Bugalis Inc., $41,800. And again, we would look to get demo funds for that to cover half of that. So, just looking for your approval to award that contract.
Okay, we're looking for approval to remove the North Grandstands, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Nick. We move on to city administrator, Mr. Przynski.
Mayor and city council, I actually have two items this evening. I'll start with the first one here. Recently, we had a presentation from our health insurance agent, talked a little bit about renewal for 2025, talked a little bit about going from a fully insured to a self-insured format. I know there were several questions that we are currently working on, and we'll answer those questions in an email. We met again today with that same agent. We as staff are moving in that direction to go to that self-insured format. We think it's going to be beneficial for our employees and our community. So, with that in mind, and because we don't have a workshop tonight, we are anticipating bringing that to you at the next regular meeting for consideration and action. Of course, there will be an opportunity to ask questions and whatnot. So, there's another touch point with the agent today. Friday, we'll have another touch point with our employees to kind of go over kind of the latest and greatest and what's going on. Mostly an FYI, because I want to make sure that we're tracking the right direction to get that in front of the city council. We want to be able to execute it. It'll be a bit of time to try to transfer all of that information and get that in place. Sheena, did I forget anything from that conversation today?
I don't think so, yeah, we're meeting with the insurance committee Friday morning, so all the unions were invited, so we can discuss the Pareto captive a little bit more. We've already touched base with them once, so the committee's already seen some of the stuff already. But we'll give them some more information, give them some opportunity to ask questions, and then yeah, look to move forward with bringing it to council on October 2nd.
So, a little bit of a reminder that's coming at us, coming up at the next meeting. And then the second item this evening for your consideration and action would be a professional services agreement for a land survey, and that's an agreement with WIT-SHET, and that's related to our public safety building specifically. The joint facility we own with St. Louis County, we would like to conduct a survey, so current conditions, topo, and site survey. Within that $13,400 quote is location services if required. So, if you have questions, I'll try to answer those, otherwise I motion to approve.
Very good, we have a motion, we're looking for a motion to approve the professional land survey services proposal with WINSHET for our new public safety.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Greg. We have nothing for boards and commissions tonight. We'll move on to license and permits. Want to prove the temporary on-sale liquor license of BTL Incorporated DBA Mike's Pub to dispense alcohol at the Hibbing Memorial Arena on Saturday, September 28th, 2024. Wishes of the council. Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Two, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing College Foundation to hold their raffle on Saturday, December 21st, 2024 at the Minnesota North College in Hibbing. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Three, approve the raffle permit application request of Hibbing College Foundation to hold their purse bingo at the Do You on Saturday, November 9th, 2024. Wishes of the council. Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Or approve the special event permit application of the Greyhound Bus Museum to hold their 110th anniversary of Greyhound Bus and 25th anniversary of the museum on Saturday, September 21st, at 2024, 2024, at the Hibbing Bus Museum. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swyberger, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Five, approve the 2024 massage therapy license of Sarah Anderson of Sarah's Hair and Body Care LLC, 302 East Howard Street Suite, 220 Hibbing. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Last six, approve the massage therapy license of Bethany Swiftic. Aspen Massage LLC, eighteen thirty, East Thirty-Nine Street in Hibbing, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Most approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Before we go to adjournment, um just to make sure regarding the Greyhound number four.
Yes.
Did we already approve the council to attend that?
I don't know if we did, we might want to include that, can we add that as a.
You can make a motion to add that.
Yes, would you like to do that?
I would like, yes, I'd like to do that.
So we have in addition to number four, allowing the council uh approval to be at the. Hundred tenth anniversary of Greyhound, the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Hibbing Bus Museum, Greyhound Bus Museum.
I'll second that motion.
You'll support that motion? Counselor Bayless, so hearing we have support in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, that was a great catch, thank you.
Was there a time on that?
It is from uh, I think it's like noon to four.
Yeah, it's maybe noon to six.
Noon to six, okay, yeah, thank you. All right, so at that time, I at this time, I'm looking for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Port by Councilor Swiberger, any discussion, hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, everybody have a good night.